Hey everybody, welcome back. I want to say thank you so much for joining us for our Daniel Bible study. We are in session seven in the book of Daniel. So I want you to grab your Bible, grab your notes, grab something to write with and get ready to study God's Word with us tonight. If you're joining us for the first time or you're new to our Bible study, you can download our notes on our website which is whitestonechurchtx.com. Whitestonechurchtx.com. Go to the drop down part, go to the videos, drop down, go to Daniel Bible Studies, session seven. You can download the PDF yourself, have your notes there for you. Also, if you'd like to give us your email, you can go to the Contact Us and we'll deliver them directly to your inbox every Tuesday for our Bible study. So hey, just want to say thank you so much. Tonight I want to keep, ask you to keep in prayer. A dear friend of many of us listening and friend of, a dear friend of my wife and my parents and many of us, Pat Bailey, she passed away early this morning, I believe, and last night, and went to be with the Lord. She's dancing with Jesus, she's shouting, she's clapping, she's bending and stretching and moving and she's doing stuff she couldn't do for a long time and she would never want to come back to this space now that she's seen the face of Jesus. So we want to rejoice and celebrate her promotion, but at the same time, we feel lost and we feel sad. So just keep the family and the friends of Pat Bailey in your prayers and the rest of you who are going through struggles and heartaches. We know this, that God is in control and God is the giver, he is the taker and he is the healer and he is our king. So we praise him in and out of the storm. And so Father, we ask for your blessing on Bible study tonight. We pray that you would open up our eyes to see what only you can show us, in Jesus' name. And everybody said, amen. We're in the sixth chapter of the book of Daniel. Daniel is captive in Babylon. He is, he has been now, he is where we're at tonight. He is on his third king since being captive as a young man. As we look at the life of Daniel, there's an interesting statement that we'll read here. One of the statements tonight, "But Daniel had an excellent spirit in him," the Bible says. And I want you to think about, what does the spirit inside of you look like? If God was to gauge and judge your spirit, the word Daniel means, only God can judge. Only God can judge me, only God can judge. That's a popular statement today. We have a lot of people that run around and say, hey, don't judge me, only God can judge me and I can do what I want to do and I can be who I want to be, don't judge me. So sometimes in the modern day application of that statement, it's like, hey, I'm gonna do whatever I want to do. I'm gonna live whatever lifestyle I want to live, I'm gonna, I'm gonna run around and do whatever I want to do and hey, you can't judge me, only God can judge me. Well, that's the takeoff of Daniel, but if you study the Word of God, there's a lot of judgments that God's already put in the Bible. God's already judged and said, hey, listen, thou shall not murder, thou shall not steal, thou shall not lie, thou shall not commit adultery. Those are judgments, those are standards of God. And so sometimes when we live our life thinking that, hey, God will just judge me when I die, listen, God's already set some judgments in place that we've got to follow. They're laws and commands of his kingdom. So if we break those laws, the devil would like for us to believe that, oh, God's a God of love and he's not gonna judge you. No, he's already set that judgment. He's gonna say, hey, why did you break my law? Well, I didn't really believe your Bible. Well, why did you break my law? Well, I heard a pastor say that that verse really isn't true and they, and they didn't interpret it correctly and that Bible's in error, or that Bible's full of errors and it's got a lot of problems in it. God's gonna say, hey, why did you, why did you go and do that which I told you not to do? Well, I just figured you are God of love. Listen, God isn't God of love, but God also judges. And he's a judge that judges righteously, he judges justly. His judgment is, is true and right. When, when somebody goes to court, when a mass murderer or a criminal mind goes to court, we hate it when those people that commit heinous crimes get off on a technicality or they get set free from a judge that is bought or a judge that is crooked. We hear these cases all the time with the mafia, with different, different gangs, different, with the Nazi war crime trials, you know, different, different high-publicized judicial court cases, when they get dismissed and we know it's crooked. We know that, hey, that guy just had a really good lawyer. We know OJ had more money than, and he hired these really good lawyers and man, it looks like he, you know. So we don't like it when the judge isn't judging correctly. We like righteous judges. And so God says, hey, listen, I am the righteous judge. I'm the judge who will judge righteously. And so Daniel's name means, God is my judge. And I want to say this to us tonight, listen, God is your judge and he's judging your life today. He's not just gonna judge you when you die, that will happen too. But he's judging today, saying, can I trust that young lady? Can I trust that young man? Can I trust that couple with, with the finances of the kingdom? Can I trust them to take my word to the lost people? Can I trust them to, to do what I've asked them to do, what I've commanded them to do? Or, or do I need to then weigh them, judge them and, and figure out how to get their attention again? Listen, sometimes we go through trials, sometimes we go through tribulations because of our own sin and God's judged us and he said, hey, listen, here's the punishment for that sin. Here's the, here's, here's the recompense that, listen, you were caught speeding, you've gotta pay the fine. You've gotta go through this hardship and hopefully you'll never do it again. God's the righteous judge. So as we read Daniel, I want you to think about God judging. Well, we read that in chapter five, when God judged King Belshazzar. Belshazzar, the writing on the wall, he's throwing a big party. He takes the goblets of silver and gold, the articles of God's house and uses them for pagan ritual, fornication and, and just perversion. And God judges him. He writes on the wall and says, hey, listen, Belshazzar, you've been weighed and you're found wanting, you've been judged and you're guilty. You've been judged and you don't have a good excuse, you have no excuse. And that very night, Belshazzar died and King Darius takes over. Now, King Darius is, is, there's some discussion on his relationship to Cyrus. Darius could have just been the title that Cyrus went by, or this was Cyrus's son. But no matter what, Cyrus is the king over the Med and the Persian empires, but Darius is now king over this territory, over what was Babylon. So as we enter chapter six of Daniel, Babylon is gone. King Nebuchadnezzar's gone, that old regime is gone. The new has come in and this new is ruled by a Medo-Persian empire. So on the statue of chapter three, the statue with the head of gold and the chest of silver, this is now the second kingdom in Daniel's dream in chapter three. So we're starting to see this progression that, hey, the king of gold, King Nebuchadnezzar, his kingdom, it's gone, the Babylonian kingdom is now gone. But Babylon is going to return in the end times. Babylon, the kingdom, is where the Antichrist will rule and reign. So when we do a history lesson and we look back, we can look back around 550 B.C. and see the kingdom and the empire of the Babylonians and the Babylonian people. Now remember, the word Babylon, Babylonian comes for the word Babbel, Babel, the Tower of Babbel, the Tower of Babel. And so the first Babylon was in Genesis, chapter 11, the Tower of Babel, where Nimrod ruled the world from that location in the plain of Shinar. This would be on the map from a couple, a couple sessions ago. In like part four, I put a map there and it shows Jerusalem here and Babylon here. Now today where Jerusalem is, Babylon is up in Iraq area and so the plain of Shinar. This territory, this Babylon is Satan's city. Jerusalem, if we were to choose two cities in the world that are warring, that will, for eternity or, or since the beginning of time, those are the two cities that will be in the end times and that's the city of Jerusalem. So the city of Chicago may not make it through the tribulation. The city of Paris may not make it through the tribulation. Mexico City may not make it through, but there's two cities that will. Biblically, that's Jerusalem and that's Babylon. So when we look at Jerusalem, Jerusalem is God's city. So we're gonna see in a little bit where Daniel prays towards Jerusalem three times a day. He prays for Jerusalem. As Christians today, we've been sold a bill of goods that says this, that hey, as Christians, we've replaced the Jews. That's called replacement theology. That's not biblical, it's not true. We have not replaced the Jews. We are not the chosen people. We are God's sons and daughters when we get saved. We're adopted and we're grafted into the family. Into what family? Into the Jewish family, God's people. Back in the day, if you and I, and I'm, and I'm, I'm talking to people from a Gentile perspective, most of our audience, with the exception of a few, are, are non-Jewish. And so if you are non-Jewish, you would be considered a Gentile in the scripture. So if before the cross, before the cross, hear me out, before the cross, if you and I wanted to be grafted into the Jewish, into Judaism, into God's family, we would have to change from our Gentile pagan ways and convert to Judaism. All men, regardless of age, would need to be physically circumcised. We would then have to follow the laws of Judaism to be grafted into God's family before the cross. What the cross of Jesus Christ did is Jesus came to rescue every nation that ran and rebelled against him back at the Tower of Babel. When God separated the world, separated the people into seventy different languages, those seventy different languages did not follow Yahweh, did not follow the God of Shem, the God of Noah. They, they rebelled and followed Nimrod and the God of Baal, Satan himself. They, they rebelled and they started to call their deities, their pagan gods by different names. So God looks and he finds a guy named Abraham and he says, Abram, out of you I'll make my nation, my people. So the Jewish people today are at the center of God's heart. Jerusalem today is at the center of God's map. Jerusalem is Jesus's home, if you'll, if you'll take that from a spiritual context. Jesus will rule and reign from a physical throne for a thousand years in the millennial reign. He'll rule from Jerusalem. So when we see Daniel praying for Jerusalem, Daniel's a Jew. He is yearning to go back to his homeland. He's yearning to go back to where Yahweh says, this is my temple, this is my synagogue, this is my, this is where the holy of holies is, this is, this is where, this is, this is their homeland. The central, center point city of the, of God's kingdom is Jerusalem. Satan's center point kingdom is Babel or Babylon. Now, right now, in 550 B.C. with the overthrow of King Nebuchadnezzar and Belshazzar, who took his place, when, when Babylon fell, that's when on the statue, the head of gold, that kingdom ceased to exist for a time. Now Babylon itself is being rebuilt. Saddam Hussein, back in the nineties, rebuilt the actual room that the handwriting on the wall was on. He offered money to anybody that could reproduce the irrigation of the gardening in Babylon. So, so there is a, there is a effort to rebuild and to excavate the physical city, but the Antichrist himself will rule and reign from this territory. When we look at land across the world, when we look at the continents of the, of the world, there are, there are physical territorial domains of the kingdom of God and the kingdom of darkness. And, and, and I'll talk a little bit about territory tonight because we'll go back to the, the seven mountains that we're supposed to conquer. These cities are central to the return of Christ and the rule of the Antichrist. Back to my point, Jerusalem itself, today, there is no temple that the Jews can worship in. Not that they need a temple because they need Jesus, but the Jews today are waiting to rebuild their temple where they could physically sacrifice animals again to Jehovah, to Yahweh. Now, what they need to know is that the, the sacrifice of Jesus Christ, the Lamb of God, that sacrifice has already taken place, but they will sacrifice again. Satan will come in and destroy that temple. He'll desecrate, it's called the abomination of desolation. And, and we'll read about that in a, in a few more chapters in Daniel going into study. But when that happens, what Satan is doing is he's not just desecrating the, the temple of God, but he's saying, I now have rule, I rule the city of God. So he will build Babylon to rule the world from and try to destroy Jerusalem. But the Bible says, Jesus will come and he will protect Jerusalem and he will destroy Babylon. So when we look at Babylon from Daniel's perspective, at this time, Daniel just saw the greatest nation of the world fall. He just saw the change of command. He just saw the greatest rulers of his time. Whether he liked them or not, they were powerful rulers. Now Daniel impacted and led King Nebuchadnezzar to the Lord. We truly believe that in, in chapter three, the king, in chapter four, King Nebuchadnezzar, he goes insane, but he finds the Lord and Daniel was, was the key to that. Now, Daniel lived through a couple other kings, then ultimately to King Belshazzar. Daniel comes in, he interprets the writing on the wall. Now we have a new king, King Darius. And King Darius is in love with Daniel's character and his excellent spirit. He promotes Daniel to number one of his three top ranking officials in his land. We see this in the life of Joseph where Joseph becomes second in command to Pharaoh. Daniel also promotes through the ranks of a pagan, a pagan government, governmental system. This would similarly, this would be the equivalent of in the nineteen fifties. An American being taken captive, just pretending, don't, don't go all, don't email me and say, you don't have your history right, but let's just pretend it's nineteen fifty. It's the height of the Cold War with America and Russia. And let's just pretend that Russia comes in and kidnaps a hundred young men from Harvard University in America and takes them back as slaves to Russia. And one of those men is called Daniel and two, three others are Shadrach, Meshach and Abednego. And the other ninety-six men or nine hundred, however many guys, they don't follow God. They, they don't follow America. They, they dropped their allegiance to America and they, they just, just succumb to Russian communism. But Daniel rises through the ranks, through an excellent spirit and becomes second in command in the Kremlin to the leader of Russia himself. This is, this is what Daniel did. He rises through the ranks regardless of who's in charge. So Daniel, like Joseph, they both raised to the ranks of, of, in pagan countries or pagan governments, Egypt and Babylon. Let's pick up in Daniel, chapter six, verse one, where Daniel goes to the lion's den. This is a story that almost everybody's heard, but let's read in some detail and let's try to put this in a context of the return of Christ. Verse one, we're gonna start, Daniel, chapter six, verse one. "It pleased Darius to send over the kingdom a hundred and twenty satraps, or governors or officials, to be over the whole kingdom. And over these three, three governors," I'm sorry, the satraps would be like mayors. I put the word mayor down in your notes. A satrap would be like mayor and in this case, the king sets up three governors to rule his kingdom. So, "over these three governors, of whom Daniel was one." So Daniel, a Jewish captive, is one of three governors underneath King Darius in a Medo-Persian pagan, non-Jewish empire. "That these satraps may give account to them, so that the king would suffer no loss." The reason these guys are there are to protect the king. "Then Daniel distinguished himself above the governors and satraps because an excellent spirit was in him." And just to say this one more time, if God weighed you today, what kind of spirit would he say was in you? Would he say, boy, that Cameron, he's got a spirit of excellence? Or would he say, oh, Cameron, man, you're so greedy. You're so angry, you're so bitter, you're so envy, you're envious. Cameron, your, your, your spirit is, is waning, it's apathetic, it's, it's just, it's not a pioneer, it's a settler. You're not, you're not charging through, you're just, you're just compromising. What kind of spirit would God say about you today? Because this king judged him, but he judged rightly. The king gave his thought to giving the whole kingdom over to Daniel. So can you imagine this Jewish man now being in this pagan empire where all these other Medo-Persian people, these other Babylon, Babylonians who, who survived the, the, the change of kings who didn't, who weren't killed? They hate Daniel because he's a peon slave that has risen to the ranks and the king wants to exalt him to two and C, or second in command. So the governors and satraps sought a way, found a way to, to charge against Daniel concerning the kingdom, but they couldn't find any fault or charge in him. He wasn't stealing money, he wasn't sleeping with the king's wife, he wasn't, you know, committing fraud. He wasn't, you know, bribing officials for government contracts. They could find no charge against him. So in verse six, it says, "We shall not find any charge against Daniel unless we find it against him serving his God." Listen, when the enemy attacks you, he's gonna first go for the easiest attack. Yeah, Cameron's greed, his pride, his anger, his bitterness, his jealousy, his, his selfishness. He'll go after, but if he can't nail us on those things, then he'll go to the depths of, hey, you know what? Then, then I'm gonna go after him because he carried his Bible to work. I'm gonna go after him because he prayed in the name of Jesus and he should have just been more sympathetic to people of other, other beliefs and just use the generic name God. You know, he's gonna come after us. So this is what happens, they can't charge him on any real level. So they have to make up charges, they have to trump up the charges, if you will. So I put some notes here, you can read through those yourself. Verse six, "So these governors, these satraps, they thronged before the king. They went to King Darius and said, oh, King Darius, live forever." Now, to put this in perspective, kings in this ancient time, along with all pharaohs, they were sought to be deity, they were sought to be God on earth. Now, before we say, oh, this is kind of a archaic mindset, let me just remind you that that mindset is very similar to today when it comes to certain religious groups that worship their leaders or certain religious groups that say that their leaders can do no wrong or certain religious groups that, that will cover up the dirty deeds of their religious leaders. Happens in, in all platforms. But these people considered the king God. "All the governors of the kingdoms, the administrators, satraps, counselors, advisors, they consulted together to establish a royal statue and made a firm decree that whoever petitions any god or man for thirty days, except you, O king, shall be cast into the lion's den." In other words, anybody that doesn't worship you and say, oh, God, King Darius, you are God, we, we love you, would you relieve our suffering, would you bless our kids? We love you, we worship you. Anybody that doesn't do that will be cast into the den of lions. Now, let's not just read this on a historical level, but let's put this in its prophetic content, or context. The Antichrist will demand the same. The Antichrist will, will get the world leaders to have people worship him. He wants to be worshiped in the end times. Daniel takes a stand, just like Shadrach, Meshach and Abednego did a couple chapters ago. Verse eight, "Now, O king, establish the decree and sign the writing so that it can be changed according to the law of the Medes and the Persians, which does not alter the difference between this kingdom and the Babylonian kingdom." In the Babylonian kingdom, the king was above the law. The king could change the law at will whenever he wanted. But in the Medo-Persian empire, the king was bound by his own word because they believed he was a god and a god could not say something that was, that was fall, you know, was, was, the, what he said was infallible. So when the king said it, it was like golden. So this is the exact problem that when, in the book of Esther, when Esther goes before King Xerxes, that, that King Xerxes had already said that the Jews would die because Haman tricks them and that's what the whole book of, of Esther is about. Well, Esther shows the, the fallacy of Haman to King Xerxes and then King Xerxes can't go change the law, he'd already decreed that the Jews should die. So instead of being able to change the law because he's under this same Medo-Persian empire, he can't do that. So what he does, he has to make a new law that says, well, the Jews have the right to fight back. They have the right to go attack those that would dare try to harm them. So then therefore, God saved the Jews. So in this, we see that the king can't change the law. The king's pride takes over, he doesn't know he's being set up. Satan will use pride to set you up. Your enemies will come at you with a plan of, of peace and a plan of, of, hey, let's co-labor together, let's work together, but really they're gonna steal all your work, they're gonna steal your ideas, they're gonna manipulate your product and present it to the boss as their own. They're gonna, they're gonna use you. That's what these guys are doing. They're using King Darius to kill his best friend. So if you think about it, they know that King Darius loves Daniel. They know that Daniel's his favorite. Thank you. They know that king, they, they know that Daniel, that King Darius wants to promote Daniel to second in command. But they continue to devise plans to kill the king's favorite person. Now, this is short sighted, it's, it's foolish on their part because if their plan fails, they know, or they should at least know, that they're gonna die for it. But they're not thinking ahead. Satan's kingdom never is as well planned out as God's kingdom. So here's what happens. Verse nine, "So King Darius signed the decree, I signed the law, everybody should worship me for thirty days." Look at verse ten and here's, here's the stance. Verse ten, "Now Daniel knew that the writing was signed." Daniel knew that King Darius passed a law. Daniel knew the bill in Congress got passed. Daniel knew that the president stamped it and said, it's approved. Daniel knew that all of Congress and all the, everybody approves the law. This is the law of the land now. "Daniel, knowing that, went home and in his upper room, with his windows open toward Jerusalem, the city of God." He didn't keep the windows shut, he didn't go into a closet. He opened the window of his house towards Jerusalem. "He knelt down on his knees three times that day and prayed and gave thanks before God, as was his custom since the early days." Listen, Daniel, we know, lived to be at least sixty-three years of age or, or he ruled in, in these different kingdoms for at least sixty-three years. Three times a day, times three hundred and sixty-five days a year, times sixty-three years means that Daniel's prayer life consisted of over sixty-five thousand seven hundred different episodes of prayer. Now think about that. Some of you are less than sixty-three years of age, some of you are more than sixty-three of age, but can it be said of us that we prayed three times a day, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, for sixty-three years? Can it be said that we have clocked sixty-five thousand seven hundred different prayer sessions with God? What a great testimony to Daniel. God uses those who pray to him. God uses those people who do not bow down to what culture says. God uses people who do not bow down to the populace of man's law and man's opinion. And, and so Daniel's one of these guys. So Daniel goes and does what he normally does. Verse eleven, "These men assembled together and they spied him out, they bugged his house, they, they got, you know, secret cameras everywhere. They, they got, they got the goods on this guy. He's praying to God." Then these men assemble, they find Daniel praying, they make supplications, praying and making supplications. They go back to King Darius, "Oh, King Darius, King Darius, did you not make a law that nobody can worship you except for thirty days? And if they do, they should be cast in the lion's den?" And Darius, or King Darius is like, yes, that's true, that's according to the law of the Medes and the Persians and it cannot be altered. So they said before the king, that Daniel. Now, when the minute they say his name, King Darius is like, oh, no. It's like the light bulb comes on. They said, oh, that, that Daniel. They, they hate Daniel because he's a Jew and he rules over them. King Darius loves it. That Daniel, and this is how they degrade him, who's a captive of Judah. He's a slave, Darius, did you not forget who he is? Let's put this, let's, let's put this boy in his place. He does not regard you. He didn't pray to you, he prayed to his God three times today. "When he heard these words, he was greatly displeased with himself." Now this is where pride goes before the fall and God reveals to us our depravity. Have you ever done something out of selfish ambition and realized it hurt somebody else? Have you ever said something to win the argument, but you did it at the expense of destroying somebody else and, and then God convicted and says, was it really worth it to make yourself look better and destroy them? Did you ever do something that hurt somebody? And after you did it, you thought, oh, what did I do? That's what King Darius did. And King Darius is about to kill his favorite guy in the whole land. And King Darius is about to kill his favorite guy in the whole land. The only guy he trusts, the only guy that has an excellent spirit. Everybody else is crooked, everybody else is lazy. Everybody else has selfish ambition, everybody else has their own, uh, their own, uh, motives. Except Daniel, this God worshiper. Greatly displeased with himself. He set his heart on Daniel to deliver him. And he labored until the going down of the sun. He called his lawyers, he called his best friends, what can I do? How can I skirt the law? How can I get past this law that I, what an idiot, how, what can I do to save Daniel's? Can I send him out of town real quick? Is there a loophole I can find? What can I do? He deliver, he deliberates all night. Now, according to custom, he had twenty-four hours to do. He, he had twenty, he had to kill Daniel that next day. He had to, he had twenty-four hours to kill, to, to, um. Execute judgment. So he belabors until the sun, uh, uh, until the going down of the sun to deliver him. Then the men, then the men come back to the king, now, oh, king, it's the law of the Medes and Persians. You can't, you can't go against your word. There's no establishments, statues are decrees which can be changed. So the king gave the command, they brought Daniel and cast him into the lion's den. But the king spoke saying to Daniel, Daniel, your God whom you serve, now listen to, this is a statement. From, from King Darius, your God, Daniel, whom you serve continually, he will deliver you. Now, the power of the spoken word. This king had faith. This king says, uh, God will deliver you. Your God whom you continually serve. Listen, when you serve God. Even your enemies, even at your execution, like the Roman soldier. See, this is a spiritual principle. At the, at the cross, Daniel, Daniel didn't even know about a cross, he don't even know about Jesus, but. But, but, but about five hundred years later. A man named Jesus will be dying on the cross and the very Roman soldier that. Was holding them down while they drive the nails in his, in his hands and feet, the very Roman soldier that's cracking the whip. As Jesus is hanging up there, this soldier says, that really is the son of God. See, your commitment to serve God. At the expense of other people slandering, ridiculing, even destroying or persecuting or killing you. When we stay true to our commitment to the Lord, even our enemies will say, yeah. They served the real God. That's the real person. That's the real deal. Here we go, verse seventeen. Then a stone was brought laid at the mouth of the den, the king sealed it, sealed it with his own signet ring. And then the signets of the lords. Now, can you, uh, uh, that, that purpose, uh, concerning Daniel might not be changed. So. They would take like wax, the king would stick his, his stamp of approval, if you will. And all these other hundred and twenty satraps and officials, oh yeah, we got Daniel now, click, click. They wanted their name on, they wanted their insignia on that, on that tomb. They wanted to seal the death of Daniel. Now archaeological digs, uh, in this area have found that the Medo Persian Empire. It's, it's historically proven that they had lion's dens. This was a form of execution from this empire. We didn't really hear this before, in the Babylonian Empire, it wasn't Dan, it wasn't lions, it was thrown in this fiery furnace, this brick oven. It was. It was basically just an oven for making bricks. So, verse eighteen. And this one is pretty interesting. I was listening to a Jewish, uh, teacher from Hebrew University. Uh, one of the Hebrew universities in Jerusalem talked about verse eighteen. So I'm gonna take his word for, 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 uh, his word on it. Um, because in the Hebrew, uh, and Aramaic, there's different languages. That, that we're trying to, to, um, uh, translate words into English, so we don't always have the same thing. A great example would be, um, like in the King James, when, when the King James uses the word closet. Uh, and it says, hey, when you pray, go into your closet. When you, uh, when you do things, go into your closet. Well, the king's closet from Kings James was the place where you would meet other kings. It wasn't just a place where you. Where you hung clothes, it was a place where you'd go meet other kings. And so like in the King James, when it says, go and pray in your closet, it meant go pray in your, in your king's closet and meet the king. Go meet King Jesus in private like real kings do. When, when the president meets with, uh, uh, foreign, uh, dignitaries, he doesn't always do that in a public setting. Cause they're going to discuss sensitive information. So many times President Trump will meet somebody in, in a private area and we don't get the privy to everything that was said. That's what, that's what's happening. So in this scenario, in verse eighteen, it says, now the king went to his palace. And spent the night fasting. The word palace there. Uh, can be interpreted as his sanctuary or his house of worship. It was not necessarily his royal palace where his house and his family and his kids were. The king, as we read, he's distraught. And he goes, and, and this verse describes it, he goes and does worshipful things. So it says this, now the king went to his palace slash sanctuary or place of worship. And spent the night fasting. And when we use the word fasting in scripture, it's, it's implied fasting and praying. No musicians were brought before him. Also, his sleep went from him. So he spent all night. Fasting and praying and was distraught. Now, there's a good argument, Daniel probably slept like a baby. We don't know. But King Darius is distraught. He is in a place of worship going, oh, what have I done? Now look at verse nineteen. The king arose very early in the morning. I mean, the crack of dawn, that's the law, hey, you know, there was a time limit on the law. I mean, at the crack of dawn, the king is up. And he went to the haste, he went in haste to the den of lions. And when he came to the den, he cried out with a lamenting voice to Daniel. Now, I want you to notice the difference between verse twenty and verse sixteen. So let's just make up some timeframes. Let's just pretend that at six thirty. At night, the, the magistrates come and say, hey, Daniel, your time's up, King Daniel broke the law. And King Darius says, okay, throw him in the den, lions den. And that's at six PM, as the sun's going down. As the sun's setting on, on his empire, he's like, okay, just, just go do it. At six PM, he says, Daniel, your God will deliver you. But after twelve hours of, of just exhaustion and, and. And being sad with a lamenting voice at six AM, twelve hours later, he's not so sure anymore. He's been through twelve hours of hell or twelve hours of torment and, and now his faith is waning. So verse twenty, the king says, with a lamenting voice, Daniel, servant of the living God. Has your God whom you continually serve been able to deliver you from the mouth of the lions? So now he's questioning. And, and, and so before we throw Darius under the bus, how many of us do that? We start off strong, oh yeah, God's gonna do it. But then as time goes on, we're like, oh, I don't know, God can do this anymore. That's what King Darius did. Verse twenty-one. King Daniel. To his shock and amazement, oh, king, live forever. My God has sent his angel. To shut the mouth of the lion so that it may not hurt me. Because I was found innocent before him and a law, and also, oh, king, I have done no wrong before you. So Daniel, uh, first defends this case with God, hey, God, God defended me. He thinks I'm a good guy. But hey, King Darius, just in case you're wondering, I didn't do anything against you. By not worshiping you, I didn't do anything against you. I didn't deliberately, uh, do anything to harm you. I'm just not gonna worship you. Now, the king was exceedingly glad for him and commanded that they should bring Daniel out of the den. So he was brought out, no injury, nothing was found on him because he believed in his God. And the king then gave the command that those men who accused Daniel, the hundred and twenty satraps, the governors and officials. Here's the, here's the crazy thing, that them, their children, their wives should all be thrown into the lion's den. The lions over, now listen to verse twenty-four, uh, and before we read this, there's some naysayers out there on this story. There's some naysayers saying, well, the lions weren't hungry, God didn't really rescue Daniel. The lions were old, they lost their teeth, you know, I don't know, the lions were, they, he had some. Drug that he gave them, you know, he gave them some Benadryl and they just slept all night. All that logic is, is foolishness because here's what the lions do, you know. Thirty minutes later, an hour later. As these other hundred and twenty people with their children and their wives are thrown into the lion's den. They overpower them, they broke all their bones in pieces before they ever hit the bottom of the den. So if you can imagine, these are ferocious lions, they destroy them. The king now, look at verse twenty-five, King Darius. And here's where I, where I really want you to, to look at this and also what King Nebuchadnezzar wrote after Shadrach, Meshach, and Abednego. Very similar writings, they declare it to the world. To all peoples, nations, languages that dwell on earth. Peace be multiplied to you. I make the decree, I, King Darius, make the decree. That in every dominion of my kingdom, men must tremble in fear of the God of Daniel. For he is a living God, steadfast forever. His kingdom is one that shall not be destroyed and his dominion shall endure to the end. Now I'd like for you to underline that. That statement, his kingdom is one that shall not be destroyed, his dominion shall endure to the end. The end of what? The end of the earth, the end of the age, the, the tribulation. So his kingdom's gonna endure, even through the tribulation, even though Antichrist is gonna, you know, destroy people and. Put the mark of the beast, one more, the kingdom of God will not be destroyed. And on this statue, if you remember, there's a head of gold, chest of silver, waist of, of, uh, um. Bronze, I should, I, I need to remember this, iron and then iron and clay, but it says, then a boulder coming down from heaven. Destroys the statue, destroys the kingdoms of men. See this statue in chapter three, in, in, in King Nebuchadnezzar's dream. This statue is a statue of men's kingdoms, the kingdom of men. So when we think of the kingdom of men, think of all the kingdoms that men have built. And the average kingdom doesn't last that long. America is, is past. Well past the, the breaking point of most kingdoms, most nations, most democrat, uh, governmental systems of control. God was breaking man's kingdoms. If your kingdom is your work, if your kingdom is your business, if your, if your kingdom is your yard. Or your 401K or your physical physique or your mental, uh, 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 mind. If your, if your kingdom is alcohol, sex, drugs, rock and roll. Trust me, God is going to come out of heaven and judge it. He's gonna judge it and he's gonna destroy it in all opposition to him. So when King Darius says, his kingdom will not be destroyed. Darius probably knows and meets his, his, he probably comes face to face with his own humanity, his own frailty and going, you know what? I don't know how much longer this kingdom can last. I don't know how much longer I can control everybody and keep the enemy out. You know, cause he doesn't know Alexander the Great's coming, uh, the Greek, you know, the, the, uh, uh. Alexander and Greece, they're, they're coming one day. He doesn't know it yet. But he's gotta be worried all the time. How do I, how do I keep the enemy at bay? All the time he's worried about this. That's what the enemy does. Verse twenty-seven, he delivers and rescues, he works signs and wonders in heaven on earth. Who has delivered Daniel from the power of the lions? So Daniel prospered in the reign of Darius and the reign of Cyrus the Persian. So, here's what Daniel did. Daniel conquered this governmental mountain by worshiping Jesus Christ. I wanna talk briefly again about the mountains, the mountains of influence. The mountains of influence of our culture. There are seven mountains. We started Daniel's Bible study with the seven mountains of influence. And I really wanna get this through to us because I want us to start to realize the mountains gods called us to climb. There are seven mountains of influence in every culture, every nation, every city, every village, every house. Every, every, um, everywhere around the world, there's seven mountains that shape culture. So if you look at the mountains of business, the mountains of entertainment, the mountains of government. The mountains of family, the mountains of religion, the mountains of, uh, of, uh, education and the mountains of media. When we go to look at North Korea, we can look at the education system. Is, 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 uh, ruled in a communist, uh, dictatorship, Kim Jong-un. It's his education system's gonna rule the entire nation. His media is going to, his propaganda is gonna be the only source of information those people get. His idea of what a family should look like and, and is gonna be what, what the families are established to look like. He rules those seven mountains in his, in his nation, in his world. So when you look at North Korea, they're shut off from the world. They don't have internet access. They don't have newspapers from England. They don't have Encyclopedia Britannica. They don't have. Wild Western, Billy the Kid, uh, novels to read. They only have the books that, that. That regime says you can learn from this education piece. They only have the religion with this, which is worship, uh, Kim Jong-un worshiped the, the family. They only worship who they're, 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 so he rules the religious mountain. He's ruled the business mountain. You can only, uh, survive off of what he gives you. He rules every mountain of influence. He rules the media, he rules the money. He rules everything in that nation. And so we look from an outside perspective. We look at North Korea and we say, oh, poor people, they're enslaved to an evil dictator. Well, that evil dictator's got internet, that evil dictator's got food, that evil dictator can do whatever he wants, but all his people. Are, are pushed down and they're slaves to his empire. Well, how did he, how does he rule them? He rules them from the seven mountains of influence. The seven mountains of influence that rule America are the mountains of business, entertainment. Media, education, business, family and religion. So when we look at those seven mountains, they are, they are forming our culture. So in our education, when we learn that we're one nation under God, indivisible, then we start to get this concept that, hey. We're one nation. I live in Texas, they live in Kansas, they live in Wyoming, they live in Hawaii, but we're one people. We're not divided, we're united. What are we united under? We're united under this concept of freedom, liberty. Freedom of speech, freedom of, 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 of press, freedom of assembly, freedom to bear arms, to. Freedom to choose what we wanna do. We're not under a, a totalitarian government that says, you have to do these, so. So we, our minds are shaped this way. Well, how are they shaped that way? Well, back in the dimes that my mom and dad went to school, they said the pledge of allegiance every day. I said the pledge of allegiance in public school up until about the third grade. And then some crazy law got passed that that's illegal or that's not right. We shouldn't make kids pledge their allegiance to the American flag. Even I remember in kindergarten praying. Just for a short time, but then, then we, oh, we can't pray, oh, we can't tell people. So all of a sudden, education that used to be ruled with, with the, with the concepts. Of America and God have been replaced with, with a different mindset. And so there's a war going on on the education mountain. The war is between good and evil, God, holiness and Satan and unholiness. Man's agenda, humid, uh, uh, humanism versus worshiping God. So when we look at that, we realize that, hey, Satan started attacking the education system. At some point in our, in our, uh, in our nation. Because back in the day, the primer for all schools was the Bible. That's how we used to learn how to read. That's how we used to learn, the, our, our very government is based upon the concepts from the Bible. So we see Satan attacking that. We see Satan attacking and trying to gain momentum on the mountain of business. Today. Business is shaping the world. There are businesses and we're even on some of their platforms. Uh, from Facebook and from Twitter and YouTube and Amazon that are silencing pastors. They're silencing people's opinions. If you say something they don't like, oh, they'll, they'll turn you off. They'll shut you off. They'll, 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 uh, remove your voice from people hearing it because they disapprove. Their fact finding, their, their information, oh, we can't say that, you can't, you can't believe that. You can't believe what, you know, so it's attacking our business. It's attacking our media. Our media is being attacked by the enemy to gain that mountain. Where only the media will tell us what, 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 uh, whoever's on the top of that mountain wants us to know. So when we look at the seven, seven mountains that shape culture. We have to understand that this is Antichrist, this is Satan's agenda. He is infiltrating those mountains. So that when he shows up in person, we'll all be accustomed to it. We'll all bow down to it. We'll be sheep. We'll follow blind, we won't, we won't stand up for truth. We'll just succumb to easy life. Let's not rock the boat. Let's not hurt anybody's opinion, anybody's feelings. Let's not stand up for what we believe in. We'll cower to that. Let's not hurt anybody's opinion, anybody's feelings. Let's not stand up for what we believe in. We'll cower to that. Daniel does not cower. There's a mindset in the church that says, well, all governments are God's God's rule. And we use that out of Romans thirteen. And and but we've twisted that to say, oh, whatever happens, if if the government passes abortion. Then I guess it's okay to kill babies. It's okay, they're not really babies. They're just blobs of tissue in 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 people's bellies. No, the Bible says thou shalt not murder. God's the giver and taker of life. That's a human being. But since our government says it's okay, well, I guess we could do it. Well, our government says it's okay to smoke uh drugs and do whatever we want, so we'll just, you know, the Bible, it doesn't really matter. God's gonna ju- This is all this deception. So God's up here saying this. I'm in control. But I've given you a mountain to conquer. In Daniel's life, Daniel was to conquer a uh government mountain. Daniel wasn't a preacher. And nowhere in here does it say Daniel preached great sermons. Daniel wasn't a great educator. Nowhere in here does it say he taught great Bible classes and wrote great devotionals for people to study. Nowhere in here does it say Daniel, the evangelist, went out and saved. No, Daniel worked inside the government. He honored God. Everybody was against him. God promoted him and he influenced the king. Same thing with Joseph. What did Daniel do that was so great? He went to the lion's den. That he he, what was so great about Nelson Mandela? He went to prison for what he believed. What was so great about Martin Luther King? He writes a great letter to all the clergymen from Birmingham jail. We uh arrested in Birmingham for standing up for civil rights. He writes a letter to all the preachers of the world and says, hey, listen, you can judge me and tell me that I'm radical and I'm and I shouldn't be standing up for my rights, but let me tell you, this is a religious base that we're we are violating people based upon their skin color. This is what Daniel did. This is what God's calling us to do. He's calling some of you to rule the business mountain. He needs you to be in business, not to gain millions of dollars. But to change the world, to change the way people think. Does business change the way people think? Absolutely. Nike has convinced us that if we wear their shoes, we'll play basketball better. Nike is convinced us if we'll use their golf balls, we'll we'll play like Tiger Woods. Business shapes culture. Government shapes culture. God's called you to education. If you're a second grade teacher at Georgetown I S D, then you teach those kids with all the joy and all the love in your heart. And you love on them and you change the world. God didn't tell you to change all the college graduates at U T. He called you to change twelve second graders at this little school that only a few people on the planet even know about. He called you to conquer that mountain. If God called you to be a a mother or a father, he says, don't abandon your family. Don't run from the mountain I called you to. Don't leave that mountain for the 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 hottie mama or the the hottie guy down the street. Stay and 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 raise your kids to love me, conquer that mountain. God's called you to conquer a mountain. Daniel conquered his mountain. And God says, there's an excellent spirit in him. I'll use that guy. God's called you to conquer a mountain. I do have a question. Um, here we go. What's this say? I can't read the writing. Okay, we have a question. We're gonna get read to it.
Power and control a mountain.
Power and control are are power and control a mountain to climb. Every mountain has power. Every, the religious mountain has power. The Pope, if the Pope says something, it has power. If if a guru from India says something, it has power. If if Cameron, uh Pastor Cameron says something, it has power. Now, now who has more power? The Pope has more influence than Pastor Cameron. The Pope, uh Billy Graham had more influence, I believe, than the Pope. Um, it it it, so yes, power and influence are at the top of every mountain. If the morning DJ. If God's called you to be a DJ. Well, the jokes you tell on the way to work. If you're if you're if you're a DJ like Howard Stern, then your your basis, your platform is perversion. Your basis is is ridicule. And so you're shaping a culture. If you're a DJ uh or or a a spokesperson that wants to shape the culture like uh uh Steve and Amy used to do on Caleb, then you're shaping a nation and a culture or a city. So wherever mountain God's called you to, he's saying dominate it. Daniel's a perfect example of us conquering our mountains. You may say, well, Cameron, I'm too old, I'm too young. Daniel was a Hebrew slave. He was, he was stripped of all of of all of his dignity. But he didn't let that stop him. The enemy says, you're too young, you're too old, you're too fat, you're too skinny, you're too white, you're too black, you're too rich, you're too poor. You're too dumb, you're too smart. He'll throw anything at you. If God's given you a voice, he's called you to the entertainment mountain. He says, hey, don't stand on that stage and sing for yourself anymore. Sing for me. Change the world for me. God's called us to have a pioneer spirit, not a settler spirit. He called us to to go through uncharted waters. As we get closer to the return of Christ, tribulation's here. Right now, tribulation is happening. You can't sing in church, you can't have church. That's tribulation. We're gonna have church, we're gonna sing, we're gonna pray, we're gonna worship, we're gonna do what God called us to do. God says this. Climb your mountain, see that your mountain is valid, see that you have value on that mountain. And and if your mountain is in is in politics. And the highest you climb is H O A president of your homeowners association. If that's the highest you get and you dreamed of being president, but you just made it to the H O A president level. Then rejoice in that and don't be the H O H O A president that's a jerk. Be the H O A president that knows everybody in the neighborhood's name and prays for everybody and serves everybody and loves everybody. And God will say, man, that's an excellent spirit. Well done, good and faithful servant. Man, you served the least of these on no name street in midtown America. And I use you to change the world. Well, I never did get to be President Trump. No. Listen, God bless President Trump. This is the last night of his presidency. Uh, I do wanna say this, that that uh we are to respect our president. And Donald J. Trump did the best thing for Israel than any other president in recent history. And our current president, at least for the next twelve or so hours, uh Donald J. Trump. He he reestablished Jerusalem as the capital of Israel. And he's known as the modern day Cyrus. So we talked a little bit about that last time. So it's it's been an honor to see our current president uh do what God called him to do in relation to Israel. I pray that Joe Biden will honor Israel. Um, and I pray that if he doesn't. That we'll stand up and climb up to the mountain and say, hey, listen. Daniel prayed to Israel. I I mean, uh, Daniel prayed to the God of Israel, the God of Jerusalem. He prayed to Yahweh. Jerusalem and Israel are central focus to the return of Christ. So we will stand up for them. And we will, we will influence our legislators and our senators and our and our uh um uh our our official, our representatives, elected officials to stand up for the rights of Israel. So I just would like to say, uh, it has been an honor to see our modern day uh uh president stand up for Israel. And if he has anything good to say about his presidency, that would be the number one thing is that he stood up for God's people. So thank you for that, President Trump. Uh, God bless you. Thank you so much. We'll be back next week. We'll be in uh chapter seven. Let me say this, Daniel's just about to get good. This book is just about to get good. We're gonna be talking about some crazy stuff, the rest of this study. Very prophetic, very much uh matches up with the Book of Revelation. So the first six chapters have been a a foundation. Uh, the next uh few chapters from seven to the end uh are gonna be prophetic and we're gonna see a lot of spiritual warfare going on. And a lot of supernatural prophetic dreams. So study this book, study the Book of Revelation. Do not let the devil tell you that you can't understand them. You read them, you read them, you read them until you do. God bless you. We'll see you next time.